19, 2021, 7:30 PM. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, free, open, and just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Tim Backus?
Here.
Councilwoman Offerman?
Here.
Mayor Markey?
Here.
Councilwoman Davis?
Here.
Councilwoman Dillinger?
Here.
Councilwoman Roth?
Here.
Councilwoman Nagy?
Here.
Councilwoman Benson?
Here.
You have a floor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting of March 15th, 2021 council meeting?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Executive session, Pat McGrell.
We should have an executive session this evening to discuss two personnel matters.
Thank you. Public comments section of, under Pennsylvania Sunshine Act 65 PAC S710 dot 1, public participation, the Borough of White Oak will provide the opportunity for residents and taxpayers of the borough to make public comments. Comments are limited to three minutes, must state your name and your address. Any public comments? Okay, mayor's report. Anna Morton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a first act date from March 2021, arrest nine, zero juvenile assault three, disorderly conduct one, drug offenses one, incident exposure one, public prejudice one, theft one, unauthorized use of automobile one, summary charge dilations forty-two, total incidents six hundred sixty-four. That's two hundred and thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Reports to standing committees, George Dillinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the treasurer's report for the month of March 2021. Beginning balances of all accounts, ten million, two hundred eight thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Revenues for the month, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Expenditures for the month, five hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Fund balance as of March 31st for all accounts, ten million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. That's in a form of a motion.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Another motion approving the check registers for the month of March, which includes electronic funds transfers, general fund checks in the following ranges, 206847 to 206972, totaling four hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. It's in form of a motion.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Okay.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
One final motion authorizing the following inter-fund transfers for the month of March. These are coming from the various funds, all going into the general fund, from liquid fuels, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, seventy-one cents; solid waste, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, twenty-eight cents; post-retirement, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, ninety-nine cents; capital projects, twenty thousand, one hundred and one dollars, twenty-five cents; total of all transfers, ninety thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents. That's in a form of a motion also.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Health, Environment, and Cable, George Panbackas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like the motion to authorize payment to Dave Klar for White Oak for wildlife control services in the amount of six hundred dollars for the month of March 2021.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
There was no invoice for the month of March from a stable account. I'd like the motion to, to satisfy the following liens that's paid in full, lot, block number 549 and 337, lien number GD nineteen, zero, one, six, one, five, five, lot, block number five, five, one, C, one, three, nine, lien number GD nineteen, zero, zero, two, two, six, three, and lot, block number four, six, one, P, forty-two, lien number GD ten, two, four, zero, six, seven.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I have a few announcements. We are having cleanup day this Saturday, April 24th. Volunteers are welcome. The event starts at 10:00 and it ends at 1:00 PM. Board, board organization starts at 9:30 up at Heritage Hill Park, and we will follow the COVID-19 instructions. Also, on April 24th, that's this Saturday, we are having an electronics and household hazardous waste recycling collection. It starts at 9:00 and ends at 1:00 PM at the Borough Building. You must register online or by calling 1-866-8150016. This is a pay-as-you-go program, and information is available on our website and at the Borough office. We will again follow established COVID-19 restrictions. And we have an announcement about the Ravens Clinic, and I'm going to hand that off to our mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Panbackas. We're the Ravens Clinic again, sponsored by the White Oak Ambulance Safe Haven and the White Oak Borough. It's going to be Saturday, June the 5th, from 11:00 to 2:00, in the municipal building parking lot, 2280 Lincoln Way. To COVID restrictions this year, you will receive a number when you go into the lot. Please remain in your vehicle until your number is called. Five dollars for White Oak residents, must have proof of residency. Ten dollars per, ten dollars per pet for non-White Oak residents, and you must have your correct change. Pets have to be on a leash, one a pet carrier, only one pet carrier, per carrier. Dogs and cats must be in good health, not pregnant, and be at least three months of age or older. These will be distributed in all the, like Johnale and all the places in White Oak. So if you have any questions, just give us shelter, a call, or the Borough, okay?
And if there were some of our animals?
No, no. Just if your cats had to be in a carrier, and the dogs on a leash, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
That gets through.
Thank you, George. Parks and Recreation, Julie Opferman.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I only have one announcement. The Rainbow Volunteer Fire Company cars in the park has been scheduled for Sunday, May 16th, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Heritage Hill Park. The event will follow established COVID-19 restrictions. The right date is Sunday, May 23rd. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Julie. Planning and zoning, Joe Nagy.
I would love to get a file issue for Mark to the base of your view during the morning for the service. Put it down.
Thank you, Mr. Nagy. Public safety, Lou Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I have three motions. The first motion is to start the hiring process for a new police officer. This is in form of a motion.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Second motion is to reject all proposals for animal control contracts. It's in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion on a second, question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Final motion is to approve the agreement between the Borough of White Oak and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 91 for the period of January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2024, and authorize the council president and borough manager to execute this agreement. This is in the form of a motion.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on a motion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Tim Backus? Councilwoman Offerman?
Um, abstained due to conflict of interest.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dillinger?
I'm going to vote no, but I want to make some comments. I just want to first state that I do support our, ladies and gentlemen, that our police officers in White Oak. My vote purely is from a financial standpoint. This is the first year that I think I've been on council, that we've had a four-year deal. We just went through a 13% increase in health care, and we didn't ask for any contribution or participation from the union. As a matter of fact, there's a clause in the contract that states that both parties must mutually agree upon any change in the health care. I know one thing, my employer doesn't ask me what my thoughts are on changing our health care. So I'm not too crazy about that provision. Plus, we have long-term expenses, and we need to control. One is vacation. We didn't do anything with possibly looking at reducing the amount of vacation that a new officer gets. We're facing right now that some of our officers are at the highest level within the service levels. The vacation that we have to cover adds an additional expense. It, it adds to having additional staff on the police force. So I thought that was a miss that we should have, we should have looked at. So based on that, purely from a financial standpoint, not that I don't support our men and women in blue, I do wholeheartedly, it's more a no from a financial standpoint.
Councilman Roth?
No, and I'd like to make a few comments on that. Very, what George just said, I agree with him, but my main concern by this post-contract is it binds council to pay in 19 years additional benefits to newly hired police officers. And I'm not one in favor, I voted to hire a new police officer, but I'm not in favor of binding councils in the future, when none of us are going to be here, as to payments we made for health care. So that's my main objection to this contract, and I voted no.
Councilwoman Nagy?
Yes.
Councilman Bender?
Yes, and I would also like to make a few comments regarding the contract. First of all, regarding the bargaining unit the officers paying into health care, that is correct that the officers, there is no increase for them to pay into their health care, which they do currently pay into. Secondly, the officers pay the most out of any other borough employees into their pension plan, a much higher percentage than the other employees do, so that basically evens out. The four-year contract is a 3% raise the first year, a 3% raise the second year, a 2.5% raise the third year, a 2.5% raise the fourth year. Our road department, which is a very, very good road department, their contract is 3.5%, 3.5%, 3.5%, so this contract is, the borough employees all receive 3% across the board. So the police officers are taking 3, 3, 2.5, and 2.5. Lastly, regarding the, the health care for the, for the officers after retirement, that is a benefit that most full-time police departments have. That's a benefit that White Oak officers had for many years, and it was lost in arbitration. In this day and age, when it is becoming more difficult to attract good candidates for police jobs, we want to try to do as much as we can to, to hire and retain good police officers. We've already had officers leave here. This just opens the door for the borough to pay 25% of their health care after retirement. I currently am a retired police officer from White Oak, as is Mr. Nagy. The borough pays 100% of ours until we reach Medicare age, and that is all. Thank you.
You have three, three, and abstain.
The mayor can break the tie.
Yes, I would be glad to break the tie. I definitely support our police officers, as we, and Mr. Nagy, and Mr. Davis, I totally agree that we should pass, we should have this contract. And I appreciate our police officers and what they do, they're 24/7. You go out and save people, and you save our community, and you help to protect us, and that's exactly what people appreciate. Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Davis.
Motion passed. Public Works, Ken Robb.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The monthly report for March is available for review during the normal business hours. Two motions here. A motion to approve the purchase of abandoned twelve XPG wood chipper and box from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated under the Coast Guard's contract number 4400020077, the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, and to authorize the borough manager to execute all documents related to the purchase. It's in form of a motion.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I have another motion, but part of my language is left out of it. Yes. The amount.
Yes, we discussed at workshop last time about replacing one truck versus another. In the meantime, this week, I contacted our mechanic with regards to the condition of the two trucks, and the one truck that's actually the newer truck, per our mechanic is, feels that that truck is in worse shape than the older truck because of the condition of the body. The truck is parked outside, if anybody would like to take a look at it. But the question that I would have to clarify, any vote that would take place, would be, which truck are we replacing? And that would reflect the cost for the truck. It's still the same contract, it's still the same Co-Stars joint purchasing contract through the state, but there are different prices in the truck.
Well, the older truck is a blown transmission, and it's, what was it, $7,000 to fix the transmission on?
Five to six thousand dollars.
So that's the older one that he's recommending to keep, and the body has fallen off the other one. The bed has fallen off, and the rocker panels, and it's like the frame's got problems.
Which one are we replacing?
Well, originally, we were going to, you know, we were originally talking about replacing the older one with the blown transmission, and the, and the torque converter and everything just actually scattered, and it sucked the parts into the transmission, ruined the transmission.
The motion is to purchase Ford F-350 pickup truck.
Right.
So all we're changing is the vehicle order to replace. We're not going to change the actual order.
It's, it's council's discretion. We can stick with the original game plan that we discussed Monday, but I wanted to bring that information to you so that, you know, if you wanted to either place the order now, or if you wanted to delay a month, obviously, I would like to order now because last time we ordered later in the year, it took us longer for delivery. You know, one truck is a 1999 model year with 89,000 miles, the other one's in a 2008 model year with 93,000 miles. Both have problems.
All right, well, let me get this straight. We are going to purchase a F-350?
Yes.
We're going to determine later which vehicle we're replacing. Go ahead.
And we're going to, we was under the impression we were going to insert the number of the truck we want to purchase now.
We talked about it in the workshop, we were going to replace the yellow one, and then we were going to decide whether we were going to just put another bed on the white one or not.
A regular cab, 2021 Ford F-350, regular cab, is forty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
That's, that's what I needed.
Okay, the Ford F-350 style side with the super cab is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
All right, my motion is, my motion was written in separate characters, two different places.
Correct, because that was part of the discussion. Based upon your discussion, we'll insert the number into the blank.
Correct.
I think we should, I think-
To amend the motion to, to purchase the most expensive truck, obviously, we need to replace one. We're looking at what? A couple of thousand dollars difference here. Who cares? We need a truck. Let's get it ordered. Who cares which one we're going to replace?
I need, I need the amount.
Let's go with the highest amount.
The highest amount.
That doesn't mean we have to spend that much. We go with the highest amount.
But I would suggest replacing the one with the blown transmission.
Well, I don't know. It might matter which one we replace.
That's about six or seven thousand dollars right off the bat, they said.
Which one we're going to buy.
Right.
Right. A motion to approve the purchase of a Ford F-350 pickup truck with plow and C-Walker Ford under the Coast Guard's contract number 13, in the highest amount-
Forty-four thousand, seven twenty-nine.
Forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and authorize the borough to manager to execute all documents related to the purchase. That's in form of a motion.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
No.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. There, there was money in the budget this year for this truck, actually. It was budgeted for.
It was by the board.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the tax collectors' reports and pay the commissions and fees due.
No move.
Your motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Engineers report, Mr. Hulman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some brief updates. We do have the final pay request for M&amp;B Services on the traffic signals. We're recommending approval of that pay request in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, seventeen cents, contingent upon the final punch list items and review of all required closeout documents for that traffic signal project. We will have, which I believe is on the agenda, a formal approval to the resolutions that were approved last week, one for DCNR, the grant application, and the Act 152 for demolitions. We're also recommending approval of the four contracts listed for the general roof, HVAC, and electrical replacements at the Borough facilities. Brief update on the paving program. This week, they will start installing inlets and piping on Sunset, and we'll work from there. It's anticipated for them to take at least six weeks to do all the inlet work and pipe work, and then move on to the milling and paving once that's all done. The last item is that we do have a pay request for the 2020 home demolitions, pay request number one, in amount of six hundred and eighty-four dollars even. And that's all I have on the press office.
Thank you, Mr. Hulman. Need a motion to accept the engineers' report and pay the fees due to Senate Engineering Company for invoices 59144 through 59147 and 59167 dated April 1, 2021, totaling three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Should I move?
Got a motion and a second?
A second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to award the bid for the Borough Facilities Project Contract Number One, General Construction, to Beazee Construction in amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and authorize the president and borough manager to execute all documents pertaining to the project as recommended by our engineer.
No move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to award the bid for the Borough Facilities Project Contract Two, roof replacements through tennis roofing and asphalt, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and authorize the president and borough manager to execute all documents pertaining to the project as recommended by our engineer.
No move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to award the bid for the Borough Facilities Project Contract Number Three, HVAC and plumbing replacement to Reno Brothers, in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, and authorize the president and borough manager to execute all documents pertaining to the project as recommended by our engineer.
No move.
A motion, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to award the bid for Borough Facilities Project Contract Four, electrical upgrades through Merritt Contracting, in the amount of five, five hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and authorize the president and borough manager to execute all documents pertaining to the project as recommended by our engineer.
No move.
Have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to approve pay request number seven, final submitted by M&amp;B Service, in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents for Greenlight Go Project, as reviewed and approved by the engineer, and authorize the borough manager to sign the above-listed request on behalf of the borough.
Second.
I need a motion first.
Okay.
And a second, question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to approve pay request number one, submitted by Ever Ready Contracting LLC, in amount of sixty-eight, sixty-eight hundred and forty dollars for the 2021 demolition project, as reviewed and approved by the engineer, and authorize the borough manager to sign the above-listed request on the borough behalf.
No move.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Solicitors report, Pat McGrell.
Mr. President, before we move on, can I ask the borough manager, just for the public clarification here, which one of these motions are all representing proceeds of the bond that we took?
Motions two through five.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I just want everybody to know the improvements that are being put into the borough as proceeds of that bond issuance. That's the reason why the bond issuance was taken, because a lot of these improvements haven't been done ever. Like the building on the, I would assume this includes the building at the Borough Building?
Correct.
Which is the original roof, original HVAC from how long ago?
Can't get parts for it. The Borough Garage, it's like you're taking a shower inside the garage when it rains. And that's not a, that's not a joke, it's really true.
Twenty-five plus years, I would say.
Yeah.
I just want the, the public to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, Solicitor Report, Pat McGrell.
We had a number of grant applications that we needed resolutions to approve for, and we did take action on those at our workshop meeting, which was a public meeting. The resolutions were unanimously approved, but we need to, I would need a motion to ratify resolutions 2021 dash zero eight, 2021 dash zero nine, and 2021 dash 10.
Do I have a motion to ratify those resolutions?
No move.
A motion, do I have a second?
No.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I need a motion to approve resolution number 2021 dash 11, to approve the acquisition and subsequent disposition of numerous parcels of vacant property known as block and lot number 5502198, in accordance with the comprehensive plan of the municipality.
Need a motion to pass resolution 2021 dash eight, zero eight?
Two or two one dash one.
2021 dash one one.
Oh, you're out of order there, okay.
No, we approved eight, nine, and 10 together.
Oh, is that all them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm saving you time.
I got you.
No move.
We had a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I need a motion to approve resolution number 2021 dash 12, to adopt the Allegheny County 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan, as the official hazard mitigation plan of the Borough of White Oak and the respective officials and agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the Allegheny County 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan are hereby directed to implement the recommended activities assigned to them.
Need a motion to pass resolution 2021 dash 12?
No move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.[1779.91]
All opposed? Resolution passed. Yes. Need a motion to accept the Solicitors' Report and pay the fees due to McGrath and Associates LLC for invoices three six eight eight zero through three six eight eight five and three six eight eight seven through three six eight nine five two dated April eighth, twenty twenty-one, totaling four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Motion, the second, question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any new business?
I just have one thing. Just wanna say that we are still on schedule to open the door on Memorial Day. We have not established dates when we start and announce. Key drives on newspaper and social media. I believe it's gonna be early days sometimes. Julie, do you have anything to add?
I think that's it.
Thank you, George. Do we have any old business?
Yes, we'd like to bring up the idea of the car that the chief would like to get for our police officers. The chief explored all other options, but would like to counsel to consider the first proposal for the police car, and that's from C Harper Ford. The one that he likes, the one that everybody likes, is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Is that another ghost car?
I know.
It's not a black one? That's the, the black one's called
It's a white. It's a white with the interior evident, no.
Oh, okay.
And we are going to try to schedule different people with different cars.
Hey, do I have a motion to purchase the police cruiser that Ina was talking about? A motion, do I have a second? Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
I'd like to announce, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, six forty-five, council workshop meeting opened to the public. May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, six forty-five, council workshop meeting opened to the public. Seven thirty P M., council meeting opened to the public. A motion to adjourn? Please adjourn.